So let's call it order. The work session for the joint meeting between the Board of Supervisors and the Planning and Zoning Boards for Wednesday, April 9, 2025. We're meeting in the Executive Conference Room in Melody Lane, ARS 38431.02H. Public will have physical access to the meeting place 15 minutes prior to the start of the meeting. Any item on this agenda is open for discussion. Members of the public may attend via Microsoft Teams or computer mobile app. Work sessions are in time for the county staff. Conform and discuss agenda items with the Board of Supervisors and public comment will not be taken. Roll call District 1. Mr. Crosby is absent. District 2.
Gomez is here.
And District 3, Antonori is here. I guess at this point, we will just go straight to introductions now.
Okay. Well, you probably all know me, Kathy Gomez, District 2.
Hi, Patty Fickett from Sandsville, District 3. Ready?
Yeah.
Tim Dupu, District 1.
Larry Saunders, District 3.
Yeah, March Paye, District 3.
Happy Taylor Development Services.
Well, that's right, Deputy Clerk.
And I'm Robert Montgomery, District 1.
I'm Nathan Watkins, District 2.
I'm Rendell Inbaugh, District 1.
There he is.
Hey.
Why me?
Good afternoon.
Isn't time for intros?
Perfect timing.
Yeah.
There you go.
Well, I'm Jerry Gonzalez, and I'm a Commissioner for District 2.
I'm Christine McLaughlin. I'm with Development Services Staff.
I'm Clay Greathouse.
Public? Public? Awesome. You're taxpayer.
Public, yes.
Taxpayer.
I'm actually sure why I'm here, but it sounds entertaining.
No, it's always good to have the county shareholder.
Sarah Yovan, Interom County Administrator.
Do we see Interom W County?
We're gonna let him sit next to her?
Yeah.
All right, so the first thing we're going to talk about is Agenda Item Number 1, which is basically just a discussion and overview of the Planning and Zoning Commission's responsibilities. I guess you're gonna pick that up? Okay.
And I have a PowerPoint, which is now being pulled up.
All right.
Christine?
Yep. So good, applicant. This is an introduction to the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission. So this is basically, wait. Show you the other one. The other ones? I got two presentations.
Same time?
Yes. Okay, this is the introduction. Here is the agenda. I'll start with purpose and authority, then composition, corresponsibility, staff roles, special use process, rezoning process, appeals, meetings, and finding of facts. So, the Commission guides land use development in Cochise County. The authority comes from ARS 11802, which mandates each county to have a Planning and Zoning Commission. The Commission operates under bylaws and rules established in 1969. All our rules and regulations included in these bylaws are online. And on the Development Services website, I've included links in the presentation. The Commission and its rules predate zoning in Cochise County. Zoning was first established in 1977. So, on the left-hand side are all the regulations in Cochise County related to growth and development. On the right-hand side is the beginning of the bylaws and procedures for the Cochise County Planning and Zoning Commission. This is the composition of the Commission. They serve staggered terms. They typically expire at the end of the year. We have one committer from each of districts that will need to be reappointed or reappointed in December of this year. And so I will contact each of you several weeks in advance of the expiration date. These are the Commission's core responsibilities. Most items are public hearings. The Board serves a dual role depending on the case. For rezoning and text amendments, land use amendments, the Board makes a recommendation or the Commission makes a recommendation to the Board. This is an advisory function. And we will provide all the supporting documents that they receive and inform you of the Commission's recommendation to help you make an informed decision as the Board. They also make quasi-judicial decisions. That means they interpret all existing laws and rules to evaluate facts related to a request. They do not create new rules, and the decisions they make must be based on findings of facts, not personal opinions. Most basically, they're applying existing laws to a specific request. Finally, the Commission is also tasked with formulating a comprehensive plan, which we will also discuss in the work session following this. The Commission creates, the Board adopts. For the role of staff, in the beginning, I mentioned the service of the Commission is pro bono, and they are actually barred from being paid. The Development Services Department intakes fees equivalent to the cost of docket processing. This includes application intake, public notification, memo present and presentation preparation, and attendance at all hearings. We also organize the meetings and ensure compliance with all state and county regulations come start. And also, we monitor house bills, and if there's any change that affects zoning regulations, we'll inform the Commission and initiate the text amendment process. So, this is what our process looks like for special uses. We typically intake one to four of these per month. All our applications are online in a fillable PDF format. The final bullet talks about next steps, which is generally permitting. And I, as I mentioned on this slide, the decision of the Commission is final unless appealed. And we have very specific appeal timeframes and procedures, which I'll discuss in a minute. Rezoning requests. The Board hears all of these, but the Board receives from the Commission is a recommendation because the Commission is serving an advisory role in these cases. So if you go against the recommendation, you're not overturning, you're just not taking their advice. Rezonings are essentially map amendments to zoning. There are also text amendments. This is an amendment to the text of the zoning. In either case, the Board review and approval is the final bullet of this process. The bullets are pretty similar in terms of the special use dockets, and all this info is available on the Development Services website. All cases considered by the P&amp;Z can be staff or applicant initiated. In most cases, map amendments are applicant initiated, text amendments are staff initiated. And before a text amendment, we'll typically hold a work session with the P&amp;Z before bringing it, the amendment in a strike-through and underline format.
Do you say tech?
Text.
Text. What does that mean? Like?
Just changing the wording of the zoning regulations. So after they see, like, the strike-through and underline, so the exact, it's exact, we can't change really any of it because it's law that you guys have made, it's policy. They will provide a recommendation on a text amendment, and then it will go before you guys to review and approve in the form of an ordinance. Appeals. These are available to applicants or those affected that disagree with the Commission's decision. An appellant has 15 days to apply from a date of a hearing. The Board must consider the Commission's recommendations and findings. These can be found in the staff report or in the meeting minutes. You may also consider input from the public and new evidence. At the bottom of the slide are your three options. You can affirm, you can affirm but modify, or you can overturn. These will also be public hearings. Meetings of the Planning and Zoning Commission are held once a month every month, the second Wednesday of the month. There is an annual Chair and Vice Chair election. Elections are held the first meeting of the calendar year. And again, when the Commission makes a decision, the reasoning must be supported by substantial evidence, which we call findings of fact. And that phrase is always in the motion, and it's tied to information within the staff report. concludes my presentation.
I have a question. When you said the membership is made up of three from a, like, so in my district, right? And Albert Young isn't here? Is he participating by Zoom?
He, no, not right now. He will be participating in the meeting later.
In the meeting. So in the districts, we have one come from a municipality, and then the other two have to be from unincorporated areas. Okay. Is there anything in the bylaws that say that you need to attend in person?
In person.
I kind of feel that we're only asking, I mean, it's a big deal that you guys volunteer, and I think it's really important, but I think if you've never been to a meeting in person, that is a problem because I think there's a lot to be said for hearing the people when they want to, you know, are coming to you all to be there physically. Because I think it's just, it makes, it's, I don't know how to say my words right now because my, half my mouth is like numb, but I think it is important to be here at least, you know. I mean, I would think once a month is not a big issue. If you are working and can't participate, then I'm not sure you should have been on the Board because it is, it is a duty that you have. And I think being there in person is very important. So I was wondering if we shouldn't think of having in the bylaws where you don't have to be, if you're sick or something's happening, there's an emergency, of course, but to never attend in person, I don't know. What do you guys, I think that that's an issue. And I know Mr. Young, I don't know, he does go by Zoom, but I do not even come, you know, not meet in person is, I think, an issue for me, maybe just for me. Does anybody have any feelings about that?
I feel the same way.
Okay.
It's really important. You get a different feel. It's one thing to review a file, and then it's another thing to talk in person.
And to hear the passion those people have. And it just doesn't come across on Zoom, that's what I think.
And we've been getting a lot of passion in our.
Even through Zoom?
Yeah, even through Zoom. So it's just something about being in person, face-to-face, and philosophically, you know, look at it from a government versus constituent perspective, you want the constituent to be able to address their government. So, and you guys are an extension of government. You're technically a extension of that government, so they should have that opportunity to look you in the eye, you know, when, when they come in to make the, making, when possible. I mean, again, like Kathleen said, there's exceptions and emergencies happen, but the focus should be to attended person, then if there's an extender circumstance, then maybe meet by Zoom. But frequently meeting Zoom, 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 and not getting in the meeting is, yeah, that could be.
And I do, I mean, in my writing, he hasn't been in present for a year.
I don't think he's ever been.
Oh, yeah.
Really? And is this his second year or?
Yeah.
At least years. I had his second time.
I, I, I mean, maybe we have to put that in the bylaws because that, that to me, not to show up in two years and not even big, it's, so how, how is the best way to go about that?
It does say in the bylaws, the process for amendment, and basically it goes before the Board to consider it.
Goes to us?
To this Board.
Okay, so maybe you guys can take that up into consideration and bring it to us.
Any other boards, if I'm familiar with, will dismiss a member if they miss three consecutive meetings.
And there is.
Again, person, you mean?
Oh, there's a policy.
There is, but it's just attendance in general. It doesn't specify whether it's on.
That's true. It's a ten, yeah. Hope it may zoom east or sometime this. Ask.
I think it's important to, you make a commitment, you ought to honor it. You ought to be here, you ought to pay the proper respect to the people that takes the time to fill out the applications and all that, and to get a sense that their opinions or their application is being respected. If you haven't been here in a year, and nobody on the Board knows what, knows what you look like, that's way past the line, and I think we should do something about it.
Okay. So then you guys do that, and then I guess we would vote on it, right? Or does it even have to come to us?
Okay.
All right. Well, that's good. I mean, that's how I feel, so that's my two cents.
Any other feedback or questions or?
So we're gonna, so now we're gonna go into like how the staff interacts with the Board, right? Because, and I think that's probably the next handout you're giving, because what I found, and I don't understand the process, and maybe I'll just state it now, and then we can go into and you can maybe answer it for me, but when the commissioners make a decision, right, and say it's to say no, and then the person appeals, and they come to us, and the staff says to approve. So how, that's how I get confused because do you not take their decision, or do you decide differently because you have different facts? Or why would that happen?
That is a good question, and we are somewhat moving away from that, I think. And Matthew can talk to this as well because he's been personally handling the appeals. When an appeal comes, when any case comes before the Commission, we offer a staff recommendation. Sometimes they take it, sometimes they don't. Sometimes we get an appeal. It may be from, you know, it could be from the person that has applied, and it's been denied. It could be, you know, from a neighbor, and, and they're not happy that it was approved. How we're going to present it to you guys moving forward is we're going to provide the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And, and then your decision whether or not to affirm or to modify or reverse, it will be based on, first of all, was, was there some kind of arbitrary or capricious decision? And you can look for, you know, information about that within the meeting minutes because you'll hear the deliberation. That's what you'll be looking for, deliberation of the Commission, whether the proper process was, was followed. And we'll always talk about, you know, when we send out letters and what sort of, you know, involvement was from the community. That's part of the process. So there's kind of a staff process for making sure it was properly followed, and then the Commission, that there was deliberate and proper discussion of the item. So that's part of it. The other part is they can present additional new information within the appeal, but they have to state why it wasn't presented to the Commission and how it would affect your decision. So hopefully that helps.
Yeah, because what I, I don't want to do is like, I think our first meeting, the Board, when it didn't want to approve, I think it was TCD or whatever his name was, and then you guys said, no, approve it, and then we deliberated on it a lot, and it had a compromise. And then when I talked to Dan, he goes, oh, well, that's what we really wanted anyway. So I said, well, why did you want us to come to vote to approve what the staff said, which was to go ahead and give it to them? The P&amp;Z said no, so why wouldn't you work out that compromise and say, look, this is a compromise, we want you to vote on that? So I, I don't want us to be voting against the P&amp;Z, you know, because that's not necessarily good either.
We'll also give you more information, and you've asked, like, which district this is in. We can provide, yeah, which commissioners or which district voted for and against. I think that's all good information for you guys, and so we're, we're providing more. And if there's any additional information that you feel would help you, we're, we're welcome to do that. But our, our emphasis will be on the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. So.
In a case where the person filing appeals based on new information, shouldn't that appeal go back to the Board that didn't have the opportunity to consider the new information? I think you come before us, there's a lot of people here that look at it from a lot of different angles, and we make a decision. And then it goes to you guys, and you guys may affirm something that we denied or whatever based on new information. What was that new information? If I was not presented on the first go-round, to help us make a better decision? Because I can see where I will go and make a rinky-dink presentation. Hey, get it denied, and then I go to the Board, and I take that serious, and I present all kinds of new information. And it's almost like two different applications, you know? I think if you get new information and they tell you that, I think you should send them back to the Board, to the Commission.
For review.
Yeah, to reconsider the new information.
I get your point. So, and it's human nature, right? So they think, and we ran into this with, the last guy told us, oh, I was told by the county, all I gotta do is this paperwork, and I just, it gets a stamp, 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 and I'm out the door, right? So he probably came to you guys thinking, oh, this is just a formality, I'm just gonna go planning and zoning. He throws out what he had at the time, you guys look at it, and, and then he doesn't get the answer that he wants, and then he comes to us, and then he does his homework, and then he goes and gets all the paperwork, and then he goes and gets, or now he's taking it more serious because he's fighting for an appeal, so he's gonna go put his game face on and get his, get his research.
We're out of the picture by then.
Yeah, and you're out of the picture by then. And so I get your point. Maybe there's a procedure that if, if, if the appellate is going to decide to appeal it, he's going to present anything that is not what he presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission. He should have to then reassemble that information and go back for a cursory review before the appeal was granted to the Board of Supervisors.
And that's what happened with the solar farm. That, you know, every, I think it was the first time you guys had all, or when they first, had all voted against it, and then all of a sudden they presented new information, and then, you know, that, that was exactly, I think, a planned attack, you know, of how to, to get away from what their decision was.
It seemed like an effective backdoor strategy.
Right.
Yeah.
So I, I think that that.
They look at us as merely a formality, just a door opener, and then they get their game going on with you guys. What did we do? Why did we waste our time?
Yeah.
Oh, you're the commissioner's, you're the cat upstairs, didn't you?
Oh, no, it's, it's, it's human nature, right? You're dealing, you're dealing with people that, you know, they think they're gonna go get a permit, they're gonna get a special use permit, or they're gonna go get a zoning change, and they fill out the paperwork, go to the Board, the Board's gonna look at it, planning's on the Board, and it's like, okay, here you go, and they're out the door. When they don't get that, then they're like, oh, you know, and they know they got an appeal, then they're like, oh, maybe I should have done a better site plan, or I should have done better pictures, just like the guy with the, with the.
By the way, speaking of appeals, in Phase 10, it's who can appeal? Applicants or affected property owners who disagree with the permission. So we've had a couple of those. Applicants can certainly appeal, but who are affected property owners? Do we need to define that or clarify that more?
Yeah, that, that also came up with the Burning Man scenario.
And another thing, too.
Right, so after they got their, and this wasn't you guys, though, it was the special use permit. They wanted to know why they can't appeal. The relative property owners couldn't appeal the special use permit, and there's not a ordinance that allows them to do that. So that's one of the things we gotta look at, is changing that ordinance to allow, in that case, relative property owners in the vicinity of that to allow an appeal. So if we denied the special use permit to the event, then they can appeal that to the Board of Supervisors, but if we approve that special use permit, then the people that live there don't have a process to appeal on.
We're often concerned with affected property owners where an activity may spill over onto their property, and they don't like that.
True.
They can be just, such as loud music, for instance. They can have a permit down the block in the neighborhood, but what if it's still rattling the windows a block away? Those would be affected property owners, right?
Yeah.
And they wouldn't have a right to appeal, I would say. Wouldn't they?
You know, but getting back to the appeals and going before the Commission based on our exchange and the information that we provide them, and then back and forth, the applicant can get a better idea on how to craft their appeal that they didn't have before.
Yeah.
Because we, we kind of grilled some of those people, and they say, oh, I'm gonna add economic benefits and all these other things that they didn't have before. So we indirectly help them.
Right.
Put together a better appeal than presented to you without our knowing.
So you're talking about a pre-appeal review.
Well, if they bring any kind of new.
By the Commission.
New information.
If it goes to you, and it's because of new information they have that they're fighting for approval.
Maybe you should go to us first.
You could say, hey, look, you got so much new information, it should be reconsidered by the Commission, and then we could start over.
Yeah.
When do they provide that information? After appeal or hearing?
Or, don't they have to give it to you guys first?
We do have an application.
For an appeal.
But then, but then a lot of that stuff that we saw in the last board meeting was brought in and provided to the clerk, or I don't even think.
Well, and sometimes, I mean, they do have the opportunity to just address you guys and read off, you know, it's, it's just.
I got, I got, I got the packet from planning and zoning, but then the guy brought in a whole bunch of other stuff, with a whole bunch of other pictures, and he took all his neighbors' houses, and, you know, they're, they had all their, you know, say, well, look at this property, it's got the same thing in this property, nobody's doing nothing about that, and nobody's doing nothing about that, and they got piles of junk, and they got piles of junk, and, you know, so he went out after your meeting. Yeah. And then went and got more information, and then we got a packet on it that he built, and he gave it to the, to Laura, the clerk of the Board, and she provided it to us in our briefing packets before. So that was what you're addressing. That's exactly what, your point is, if you're gonna go and you're saying, I'm gonna appeal, and he goes and gets all this additional data that he's gonna present to the Board that you guys didn't see, then maybe you should do a pre-appeal review. Yeah. One more time to allow you guys to give it, give it a relook. I don't know. And, but I don't know what the statute say about that. We might run into a Title 11 problem on that process, I'm not sure. If, if, if we could do it, then yeah, I think we should.
I think we should, too.
Take a look at it.
Then that prevents us from having to go, you know, and look at all this new information and try to figure out what the best decision is. When, you know, they say no, and all of a sudden, there's all this other stuff, and we're like, oh, we want to be fair, but I don't want to go against what you guys decide unless it's, you know, something that I'm adamant about, because then why are you here? And why are you wasting your time?
And it depends on the issue, you know? If you have the Board unanimously voting no based on the information provided, and then it goes to you guys with new information that we never saw, that's one thing. But if I was a Board member, and I would get a request to appeal, I would ask them, hey, has the Commission reviewed this? Again, with your new information, you need to present this new information for them to make a better quality decision, and it'll help you, the Board, make a better quality.
Do we, do we build, like, tracking like you would for a trial, an evidence file that has Exhibit 1, Exhibit 2, Exhibit 3, Exhibit 4? Do we, do we do, do that now? A process similar to that for you guys?
I don't think we necessarily do it in terms of what we would see in a courtroom, but we do compile all the evidence together with the minutes and the public input, all that.
To the point here, if you, if you run it in that similar fashion, and you have Exhibits 1 through 6, and those were the exhibits that were reviewed by the Commission, and then if it goes to the Board of Supervisors and it has any information other than that, then that is a way to determine that there's additional evidence to be presented because the evidence presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission was Exhibits 1 through 6. So if it now has Exhibit 7, 8, and 9, then the Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission can then request a, as I was, I named it, a pre-appeal review by the Commission before it gets sent up to the Board of Supervisors, which may allow you, the opportunities of Board, to review it and change your mind if the new evidence influences that change.
I think it'll help us out because we get another opportunity to review and make a better recommendation to you.
So who's gonna take the?
And there is a space on the application where it states, please discuss if there's any additional information that was not provided to the Commission. That's where they are supposed to list any new information, and also why it wasn't provided to them. So that would be on the appeal application.
I can't remember if it worked out either. I don't think it worked. No. He brought, he brought in a stack of pictures and photos.
That was to, and at the last minute of the day.
Yeah, so, so this is, this is the problem here, right? So to your, to your point, so we're making a decision with information that you didn't have. And it's not that we're trying to, you know, second-guess what you guys are doing, it's just that now things are different. So I get your point, you know, and you should have that opportunity.
There is one option, and I, I, I'm not a lawyer, so I, I talk to the County Attorney's Office first, where instead of one of those three options, you know, we're gonna overturn, we're gonna, those, those three options, the fourth option, remands back.
Yeah, we'd be like the Supreme Court, we can remand it back.
Well, another thing, another thing we can do is when the Chair says the vote is so, and you have the right to appeal, it's at that point that you'd say, if you get a difficult, additional information, we'll have to do a pre-approval.
Yeah, so the more that it's stated on, are you going to present new information, it's gonna go back, is, is gonna be better for. It's going to go back, is, is going to be better for everyone to understand how it's going to work.
Yes.
You know, so then the guy that comes the day out, I don't even think we could accept, we should accept it. You know, well, you know, you, we're going to kick that back then, since you brought all this new, all that new stuff, give it back to the board and remand it back.
And I don't want to refuse to take it and then make it appear as though it's a default approval.
Right, so you remand it back, right?
He also did not comply with the instructions from what Christine is saying, right? He didn't indicate that there's no evidence or anything.
Well, he just presented.
That might be, that might be something we could, we could do.
I mean, if you don't follow the instructions and that evidence is not.
So when you do that nice packet for us, right? You present the evidence and, and then I, I could look at you and say, Mike, is there anything in here that wasn't in front of the board? And you say, yes, the, the, the appellant is providing this additional information that the board, the commission didn't see. And we could say, okay, well, then we're going to remand it back to the commission for another review.
We could make it more explicit in the, our presentation. It's in the staff report, but we could make it more explicit in the presentation.
Because they all brought, every one of them brings extra stuff to those meetings. They do their packets and then they, you know, like you say, they realize that now, okay, now that first hurdle I thought was not going to be that big turned out to be a little bit bigger than it was. So now I'm going to really get serious and do my homework and.
And they are very limited in time. They have 15 days.
Right.
So between that time and when they go before you, they, they have some more time.
Even the guy with the wall, right?
Yes.
The guy, he, he came in and what, well, you guys didn't see that one. That was, that was the other. But he went out and he took pictures of, you know, and he brought in all sorts of pictures and slides. I mean, people really, you know, when they're fighting for what they believe, you know, really go to the mat on that. So yeah, they provided a lot more information to us than what was originally presented. So we could do that.
Yeah.
We want, we could put it in our rules for the board that we're writing now. That will be rule 73.
My question, Christine, does we do that, does it reset the clock?
Oh, yeah.
On those sort of things that you need to do, I, I, something we would have to work out is how does that.
Let's take a look at that because it sounds like your mission here feels as though, and I, I would agree, that if there's new information that's brought forward, that they should at least have a crack at it. I mean, there's got to be, but maybe, maybe we say that you get 15 days and then there's a five-day review by the commission and then it goes to the board of supervisors or something. I don't know. We'll have to figure that process out.
Yeah.
Details and.
There's a lot of, this is, and we got to get a lawyer involved too. We got to bring Korea in and.
But I think, you know, otherwise that we're basically wasting their time.
And ours too.
Yes, I don't want to spend 30 minutes.
We were talking about it yesterday, 30, 40 minutes on each, each public hearing. It's, it's, and there's all these people waiting for other agenda items that they're trying to do. We spend a significant amount of time going back and forth and back and forth.
And it's not meant, you're not meant to retry.
No, exactly.
Already been before your advisory board.
Right. And so I want to make it so that their decisions are important. I mean, and they're.
Only in rare circumstances.
Who's going to review new information?
Right.
That's it. Before the final vote.
There, there's also a unique situation and we might as well bring it up now because what we did is we tabled, for those of you in district three know about this Pierce Sun sites problem. And, and it's going to continue to get worse. So we're going to have to figure out how to, how to solve it. It's, it was a, a defunct subdivision that was originally going to be put in there and they subdivided these lots into small, one acre parcels. And now we're bundling them into five acres to get to the RU4 threshold of at least four acres or more. But what has happened is the people that bought into that subdivision, when it was a subdivision, built nice houses there. And they're not happy about people building adobe mud houses or trailers or manufactured homes or whatever, after they drop, you know, 300, 400 K on a nice house. And that's what we're dealing with now. And that was the case with Thede and Pierce, was the other guy's name?
Prince.
Prince.
Yeah.
And that's the case with those two guys. And again, just because, you know, and, and I'm a caveat entor, that buyer beware guy. If you buy land in parcels, you need to be aware that if it's zoned a particular way and you're buying zone, land zoned this way, and then all of a sudden you want to start trying to plan and change zone, that now you have to take into consideration the impact to your neighbors. All right, it's not like you're buying acreage way out in the middle of nowhere and whatnot. So when those cases came up, you know, the big, the big problem was, and I went out there. I went on both parcels. I drove out and looked at both of them. And I could see the sightlines from all the houses, right? So here's a guy that's going to put, you got all these 2,000, 2,500, 2,800 square foot homes with outbuildings smaller than the main house. And then you got a guy that's going to put a 600 square foot mud adobe brick thing and he's going to build a 2,200 square foot barn. All right, so I, now I see what the neighbors are happy about that. So my philosophy is, you know, you have someone who's invested a significant amount of money and they believe these are the rules when they bought their house. And now another guy comes in, he buys five or six parcels, he tries to cludge them together to get a, get an RU4 zoning change. And then he gets all bent out of shape because, you know, his neighbors all say, no, you know, we don't think that's right. You need to build a 1,500 square foot house and keep your barn at 1,000 square feet or outbuildings at 1,000 square feet because that's the rules I had to follow when I bought my house. And now you're going to change the rules just for you. So, and then you have to take into account, you know, as I, I have the Thomas Jefferson analogy, my liberty, liberty ends where your nose begins. So the minute I start infringing upon you, affecting your property value, affecting your quality of life, then that's where the government and you guys, all of us actually come in and say, okay, we have to establish a, a fairness, a balance of fairness here. So all these other people that have invested and bought nice parcels and houses, you know, they want to keep that area the same. So what we talked about in that meeting was maybe creating a special overlay, special zoning zone to deal with that phenomenon because that's one of the rare weird cases in the county. And I do that and I was myself, Mark Spencer does it, right? We buy tax liens and then we try to bundle them and sell them, but I don't change the zoning out.
Just for the record, I think this commission is very aware of the balance.
Yeah.
Always kicking that on every meeting to be fair about the balance.
And you know, there's a growing thing too that Cochise County is getting well known for, and that's the opt-out community, right? And they, we have some people deciding to move here because of that. So I think down the road, we're also going to have to do some kind of work session with the opt-out community so that maybe they need a designated area where the opt-out community can go to. Because that's going to be, I think, where issues may come. And if we are ahead of the game, then we can try to figure that out.
They're buying RU4 zoned property, they're, they, and they're good to go. The problem that's occurring is they're buying residentially zoned, not rural.
Converted.
They're buying residentially owned smar, small acre parcels and they're combining them to get to the threshold to try to convert it to RU4. And that's where the other neighbors are getting uptight about. And, and, and it's a little pocket of RU4 surrounded by.
Yeah.
Residential zoning. And that's, that's where the, the challenge is.
You know, in district two, that cap country north of Douglas, along Leslie Canyon Road and Torch McNeil, and all of that's been subdivided. And how do you deal with that when you've got new people moving in trying to do what you just said? We're going to have to come up with a better mousetrap.
I think so too.
To, to say no.
That's what, that's what we were trying to figure out a compromise.
The rules are the rules.
Yeah, when you buy SR174 or SR46 property, right? You knowingly bought it, zoned at that, just like all the other neighbors when they bought that property. But then you buy five neighboring properties and you come into the, you fill out the paperwork over at the treasurer's office. And then you get told, oh, well, if you go in into planning and zoning, you can combine these into one lot. And then you get above four acres and then you can apply for RU4. And then you can apply for opt-out and build, you know, whatever you want. That's the, that's the game that's being, being implemented. And that, that is a problem for people that bought what they thought was a lot in what was going to be subdivision. And now that, because that subdivision was bankrupt. And I seen the same thing when I went and toured the, the one out in Wedston, right? The, the, we did the, Baba, Baba McCarr, I can't pronounce.
Baba Kamori.
Baba Kamori, right? So that place went under and you got like 12 houses out there, nice houses out there. And now you've got people that want to do opt-out on there and those neighbors are like, no. And they want their roads paved.
Yeah.
But I mean, that, that's the, that's the problem you have is you had this, the housing crash created these anomalies in this county because they're all these Texas pension funds and come in and bought all this land thinking they were going to make a windfall on this huge housing boom in Arizona. And then all of a sudden the housing boom went bust poof in 2008 and the housing market crashed and all of them went out of business. And now you've got all these subdivided subdivisions with no houses on them. And that's creating a problem, so.
Maybe I missed something. I was, at both those meetings, to me, the main concern of the neighbors were mobile homes, not the size of the principal structure.
And the second meeting, the principal structure issue came up.
Yeah.
Because he was building a 600.
He was going to build a small.
A 600 square foot house and then put, he wanted a big barn.
Yeah.
A shop.
Multi-purpose.
Yeah, yeah.
And I, I kind of brought up something about that, defending that to a point, that people will build, you know, have a home, but they want, you know, they're horse people and they want a big facility because horses are their livelihood, their passion, their hobby, whatever. I, I know a lot of places where the barn area is a lot bigger than the house. I want nicer, but that.
But if you're RU4, you can do that.
You can.
Right, but if you're SR1.
If you're SR43, you can.
Whatever, once, was it one?
174, you could, right?
It's the same.
No, 174, you can't build.
Oh, that's right. Yeah.
And that was just up, that was the, that was the problem. So that, that was zoned 174.
Right.
Yes.
And then he wanted to change it to RU4 so that he could build a bigger.
I thought it was SR43. It's SR43.
Was it SR43?
But the options were to go to RU4 or SR4.
SR4.
He picked RU4 because he wanted to do the larger structures.
Right, right, right.
But that allows mobile homes.
Right.
But that's why we put the condition on there that there would be no mobiles.
But how can you know that, that, that was staying and what, he's like 78.
It's a complaint-driven process.
That's another issue that we will, we will with is, is the code enforcement piece, which is, we only have two code enforcement officers.
Right.
We have to look at that.
But that's why I suggested maybe during a work session or something, we need to look at SR174 and make an exception or come up with something.
Right, that's what I'm saying. In that area, maybe we create this special zone-in zone where we come up with a different rule for this particular scenario.
So do you think the size of the structure was one or one of the complaints of one or two neighbors as well?
Right.
Not knowing how grand the structure was going to be.
I think their heartburn, again, and when they came up and spoke was how small he planned to build his house.
Right.
And they're looking at their houses, right? So if you look at the satellite view and then when, if you physically go out there, they're big houses, they're all north of 2,000 square feet.
Right.
And a guy comes in, he's going to build a 600 square foot house and he's going to build a 2,500 square foot workshop barn.
Yeah.
And horse corrals and out, other outbuildings. That's what the neighbors are like, hey, I had to build a house and I got to build everything. You know, that's, that's kind of where they want to keep, and they said that like five or six times, they want to keep the feel of that neighborhood the same. And they don't want these little pockets of RU4 with what they perceive as.
My perception of that meeting is that is not what was told to us. They were more concerned about mobile homes. That was.
That was the major. They brought that up a number of times, yeah.
There was no concern about.
I never heard. Well, no.
So that's additional information.
Yeah, well, they came to speak at the, at the meeting and that's what their.
That was stuff we did.
Well, and then I forgot the lady that was the real estate agent, what was her?
Nikki Shields.
Nikki Shields.
Michelle Shields.
Michelle Shields, yeah. So her, her, her argument was, you know, relative property value and appeal and general appearance of the neighborhood and, you know, and, and I looked at the satellite photos when we were sitting up there and you're right, you got a nice house, nice barn, nice corral, nice house, nice barn, nice corral, pile of junk, four RVs, piles of stuff piled up. And that's what's, that's what's going on.
Maybe we should start thinking about.
And then the guy had an RV parked in violation, there's code violation, you know, because he had an RV parked out there.
Physically think about which way these land use changes are going and what. A lot of people are moving in with different ideas. You have competing interests on what to do with your piece of ground.
There's, there's plenty of land though that's zoned RU4 that for sale that you could go buy. And my, my point is if you're, if you knowingly buy zoned residential property and then you want to do something other than that, you should be aware of that. You may or may not get the zoning change. Now, you may get the zoning change because your neighbors may say, I don't care, go ahead, build or whatever.
I think.
If you're getting significant community resistance and they're coming to us and they're overwhelmingly emailing the snot out of you about these things and they're coming into the meetings and they're crying about it. And I physically go out there and I look at it and I get their point. I could see their point.
I also think, as you're talking about competing interest or a new view of how land is going to be used, the opt-out community is huge.
Yeah.
It really is. And I think that the next thing that we need to do is think about how we deal with that. Because.
Yeah.
I actually know people who are moving here just because we are very friendly to the opt-out community and that's going to eventually, you know, towards.
They need to know to buy RU4 properties.
But are they enough? Because some would say that they're not.
In residential 174.
Yeah, I, I, I got you.
They can opt-out in that.
Yeah, but they're still supposed to build a.
Larger home.
Right, right. That's the, that's.
So the next.
The rules aren't very clear. And then, and then Mr. Prince brought that up in the meeting. He actually accused the treasurer's office in the meeting of telling him that he was able to do this and he wouldn't have bought it if he didn't know because when I went to, so I went and talked to the treasurer, of course, she said absolutely not. And I specifically tell my people not to say any of that thing. So he just pulled that out of, I don't know where, maybe. I don't know if he's probably listening. I apologize. I'm not trying to not say one way or the other, but we got to make sure that people understand that you are buying this property and if you have intentions of doing something different and you need to get zoning changes or special use permits, you need to be aware that you may not get that, you know, and that. But they're under this premise that, oh, just go to Cochise County, buy five parcels, slap them together, change the zoning and build them, do whatever you want. them together, change the zoning and build them, do whatever you want and that, that's not.
So the opt out community has, you know, the month of June is going to be a proclamation for them. I think down the road, maybe in June or something like that, do you guys deal very much with the opt out community? Do you know their concerns or?
We're not allowed to consider it, making our decision.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
In fact, there was one point where I asked them to leave it off the, leave it off the docket because it was irritating.
So in other words, you can't make any decisions at all because they're opt out.
It's, it's, they're allowed or it isn't, it's not our concern.
It comes back to the sizes of the structures and the rules on the house bigger, is the barn bigger, is.
Right. So the opt out community came to me and said, look, we have some issues, maybe we want to think about a special area in which we're zoned to do all the different things we want to do because then you got to get into gray water, you got to get about international laws and all that. I think it's worth listening to what their ideas are and how they see what they can compromise or what they, their needs are or what they, you know, what they feel is going on because it's a growing community. As we know, some people who even want to work in Cochise County are looking at it, opt out and saying, hey, I want to go to that community because they're so friendly, they opt out. So I think that's something that maybe that would be just, the board would look at that then since the planning and zoning doesn't deal with that?
Yeah, well, it's, it's an amendment to the building code. We do have a building code advisory board. They don't meet as often as our.
I didn't know we had that.
We do, so.
The layers, right?
Yeah, we could, and, and they're, they're more people that are, are in the building community. You know, we have.
Builders and.
Yeah, yeah. So if we need to have a new work session, um, we could, we could.
Yeah, I think that that's something because I know I'm hearing a lot from the opt out community, so I don't know, do you?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so I think that's something that we need to look at too.
It's a popular concept in New Mexico, actually, for decades.
Especially out where I'm at, right? Because I live there, I'm just off the dragon road and that's what everybody out there's doing. I got this tiny, shiny home right down the road.
And I just, we have gentlemen.
Yeah, yeah. So, so I get, and I believe in that, right? It's a free country, but as long as you're not taking the property value away from your neighbors, knock your socks off, right? As long as you're not taking away from their quality of life where they bought and they spent a half a million bucks or quarter million bucks to build a nice house, thinking they got this beautiful view of the dragon and mountains and then you're going to put a.
Big metal barn.
Yeah, they, they, that's what the problem is and I get that. I mean, I, I, if I were to invest that amount of money in my neighborhood and I think I'm buying a house in this neighborhood and all of a sudden this guy comes in from, where's he from, Canada, he said?
Yeah, he was from Canada.
He's here six months out of here.
Yeah.
It's difficult to ask that.
Right, he's coming in, he wants somewhere to play with his horses, train his horses or whatever and you know, that, that, and then these other neighbors are like, you know, that's, that's the, again, the, the balance has to be there. You got to protect those other, other property owners and that's, at the same time giving him, now then the compromise is, can you build a 1,200 or 1,500 square foot house? I don't want to spend that kind of money. I don't have the money to buy that, spend that, you know, and then like, well, then maybe you shouldn't have bought the, bought the property. I hate to say it, but that's the old caveat in cover, right? So.
Yep.
You buy four acres, then you put a 20 by eight mobile home on it and a little dog house and you opt out with anything else, 10 years later, it's falling apart, it's there and you get to see it every day that obstructs your beautiful million dollar view and there's no reason or anybody willing to do something about that. They have a lot of that.
I'm like the, I am the newest person on this board. I came on a year ago in February, I believe, and believe me, I've learned a whole lot in the last year because I came in like a baby, not knowing much of anything about planning and zoning. And what I have been very impressed with, with this board is the compassion that everybody takes and the interest of trying to make a correct decision and listening to what's being said, questioning, uh, I've, it's just been very impressive that this, this, the board members that I came on with, I have learned a great deal from. And I think they do a really good job of what, of listening and trying to, to make the right decision. Unfortunately, we each can, we are all very different and we each take a.
But that's the point though.
Yes.
That's the purpose.
We each take a different point of view or what we hear and sometimes we're for it and sometimes we're not and, but I think that's how it's supposed to work. And like I said, I, I'm just really impressed and the staff has been very helpful to me. I think they present, when they put together, Matthew puts together all of his information, I think they cover pretty well everything.
Oh, yeah, he's got a great.
But they have a criteria that they have to work by.
Right.
And if, if applicable is his word, if so many of these things are applicable, then they can't hardly deny not addressing that. So I can understand where they come from, where you, where they say yes and we say no. They're coming from this applicable, this, you know, this all applies and, and these things that do and like, I can't even think of them now, but I, I, and I read all that and I read what he sends me and I read the applications and it's kind of interesting because a lot of times that application, uh, even when they get to us, uh, things are different. They, they, what they put in their application is different than what they're telling us. So it all comes down to personalities, people and how you, how you deal with it. But I have, I think this is a, a, a good group of people. I mean, I don't know what they, how they feel about me, I've at least been here, I come the feathers. It's a day's journey for me.
Yeah, where are you coming from?
San smoke.
Oh, San smoke.
Yes, we would love to have you come visit us.
Yeah, I, I put signs up out there. It was a drive.
It was a drive.
Yeah, it was a drive to get out.
You have to know, I call us the redheaded stepchildren of the world.
You are sort of isolated the way you're, we just approved a truck stop for you though.
No, you didn't, you approved one for Bowie.
Oh, that was a Bowie. Oh, okay.
That has been the rivals forever. That was the high school rivals.
I just, I just stepped on that.
That's all right. I love Fritz over there.
We'll, we'll work on the truck stop for you guys next.
Yeah.
You know, there's a, in my district, District Two, I try to make it a point to visit with people and see how they see the world. Most of the people that I talk to in District Two have moved to that area because of the landscape, because of the birds, because of the beauty of the landscape, the health of the environment and that kind of stuff. And they want to keep it like that.
Yeah.
You can share some of that, it's big country, but they keep telling me, make sure that we don't compromise, uh, the land, the health of the land, the environment, the wildlife, all that kind of stuff. Cochise County is a big place, they can stay north of Sierra Vista or north of Wilcox and we laugh about it, but it, down in the southeastern part, which is a very healthy wildlife area and very diverse with a very fragile balance of those resources, vegetation, wildlife, uh, everything. And I take that seriously. When people come, I think about erosion, I think about all of the adverse effects they might have on that concept. There is a place that we should protect and keep in Cochise County if nothing else and that would be District Two. And most of the people that live there have a very high environmental IQ. All of the scientists and portal and everything else and the farmers are pretty bright and the ranchers. Well, we make a living from the health of that stuff and they don't want anything to threaten that, you know? It's a little give and take because people like that and they're going to move there if they can afford it.
Two, two and three, I would argue are very similar and, and again, from the experience that, I, I'm not speaking for Kathleen, but we have seen that, of course, District One is mostly Sierra Vista.
Yeah.
It's a very metropolitan suburban city type environment. She and I have landmass wise, about 80% of the county, landmass wise. Population wise, we've got more cows than, than, than people.
Yes.
Right, so, but we do have the biggest districts, they're huge compared to District One. No offense against Mr. Crosby, but he, he's, he's got a high density population packed all in, it's easy to knock on doors, he rides around on his bicycle every election cycle, that's what he does. I can't do that, I'll get shot. Go walk in on, so, so it's, it, it's similar. I, I would agree, I hunt, that's my passion, I love hunting, right? So protecting the environment, the habitat, of course, is, is, is a big thing for me and there's a balance. People want to have their slice of paradise, I got my 40 acres, I don't have any mules yet, but I got my 40 acres. I love my little piece of paradise, right? I spent a lot of time and money in my life getting to that point where I could buy that property. I got a 2,000 square foot house, I got a horse barn, I'm living the dream, Cochise County, that's why I'm here. I want to keep it though.
Yeah.
Right, so, but there's people that want to build and do things next door and, and all sorts of stuff and they don't understand that there's that mentality out there and you have to have that balance. I believe in their property rights, you buy five acres, you want to do stuff on your five acres, you know, knock your socks off, but there's people out there, I've been out there 10 years and I got a neighbor that's been out there 20 years and I got another neighbor that's out there 15 years and all of a sudden a new guy comes in, you know, there's that tension, you know, when the new guy comes in, especially if he's from New York and he's from New York and like three weeks after he's there, he called the cops on me because I was shooting in my backyard and sheriff's deputies come out. But I mean, that's the, that's the, I'm with you 100%. Yeah, I want to do that too, but we gotta, you know, it's the balance, government's got to create that balance.
You know, in our districts over there on the east side, people understand that dogs bark because they're working.
That's the other thing.
On the west side, they don't.
Yeah, 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 that was funny. But I mean, where I, again, that whole area we're talking about and pure sun sites out there backed up against the dragon mountains all the way to Cochise Stronghold, they have a perception, that's a million dollar view there. I mean, if you stood up and I said, what, Thede, Thede was the guy's name?
Yeah.
I stood there where he said, I want to put my house right here and he goes, look at that view. I go, dude, I'm with you, I, I see that view, but let's step back to your neighbor's property here, let's, let's take that view from over here. Okay, now look at that view.
It's a big barn.
Yeah, so this is the, this is the problem. I, I get your, you know, hi Frank, I put all my money and I, I got it, dude, I got it, but it's not just you, you've got, you've got neighbors and you've got to learn how to, like you go out and talk to people, you got to talk to your neighbors. A lot of these folks don't talk to anybody.
Yeah.
You know, and then they want to go do stuff and then they got all the little red X's on the plot maps of no, 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 all the way around and they're trying to figure out why. You know, it's a free country, I own this land, I should be able to do whatever I want, yeah. There's a limit to it.
Exactly that, we postponed a deal or tabled it to get the neighbors to talk to each other.
And instead they withdrew.
Yeah, withdrew.
Everything withdrew.
Totally, yeah. I, I really appreciate what you got, you, of all the boards in the county, I'll just tell you, you're the one we hear from the most.
That's why, that's why we want to raise.
Hands down, hands down, you're, you're, you're doing, you're doing a service.
Yeah.
Um, that no, no other board does in, in the county. So, but, and we, we've recognized, so we're relatively new to the board, obviously, but I've been in politics a long time and Kathleen's been in politics a long time and we understand the, the longevity politicians are related to how happy they keep their constituents. So, you know, our goal on both of us is to make sure the people that we represent are for the most part happy, at least 50% plus one. But it, but I mean, that is, is our goal and I'm, I'm trying to balance that and, and literally my district and her district are, are, you know, we, we're dealing with this.
A lot of overlap, yeah.
Yeah, we're trying to, well, it's the balancing act, right? Because you got a lot of people that have been here and I've, I've got ranchers whose families have been here 150 years and then I've, and then I've got people that moved in two weeks ago, right? So you're, you're trying to balance these competing goals and nobody wants change, there's always this resistance, there's the, as I was talking with Joe earlier, there's the citizens against virtually everything called cave, right? There, there's those people out there, right, that will fight any little anomaly, but we, we've got a problem in the county too. One of the other things I want to bring up with you guys is we just got the economic report again for Cochise County and it is not good.
Yeah.
Um, we have no growth in this county, we are, we are dying, literally dying. Sadly, our population is aging, the younger population is leaving and we are heading an economic sort of shift where black and white economics is the 25 to 55 year old population is where the money comes from. They're the working age, they've got families, they spend a lot of money on diapers and formula and cars and houses and new stuff. And then when you hit like 60, 55, 60, you retire, you downsize, you buy a nice little house in Cochise County and you just sit on the porch, you know, you go to the store and that's about it. You're not really, no offense, I'm there too.
Yeah, no.
You know, but my son, the minute he graduated from college, gone, he went to Mesa, right? And that kid's making a lot of money right now and he's buying, he just bought a brand new Dodge pickup truck in Mesa, not in Sierra Vista, not in Benson, right? So that's our problem. So we've got also when it comes to planning and zoning, and this is part of the comprehensive plan, we've really got to start getting serious about commercial zoning and industrial zoning to start and finding incentives to bring those businesses in here because the bad news is as a property taxpayer, the property tax burden is shifting more and more and more to fewer and fewer people.
Yes.
And that is, that is not going to work. We have to broaden the tax base in this county and that's going to mean more people moving here and there's going to be the cave people, uh, that are, you know, against all that and that growth. I've already talked to some of them out, uh, where, you know, Benson, we want to look at putting a, a commercial industrial park between the highway and the airport out there off I-10, you know, and there's all these people are, are already getting all uptight about that, but we got it, we got to do it. We want to put a, a big commercial retail in at the I-1090 intersection there and we want to put a, a port entry in down in Douglas, we want to put a hospital down in Douglas, we want, there's all these things we want to do, we got to get the appeal of this county so that we get population growth and economic growth or we're, we're going to go out of business as, as we can't afford to support the infrastructure here. We have fewer and fewer people that are earning high, when, my, my income when I retire is going to drop dramatically. I'm getting ready to retire in July from my other job. When I retire in July, I'm going to, and I'm, but my kids are gone, I'm done, right? I don't need the money anymore, my kids are gone, so I'm not going to be spending the money that I've been spending in the last 20 years. And that is the problem that we're, we're facing and the numbers that we just looked at in the budget review is just, we've got, we've got to do something and you guys are going to be playing a huge vital role in that, especially in Douglas now with the port, you got all those warehouse guys want to put in warehouses and the truck terminal, we want to look at putting a rail line down there with a rail, you're going to be hearing all sorts of people screaming.
And, and there's a lot of people, like you say, that don't like change, they say, the people who have clinics in Douglas, you can't build a hospital, you know? When we say, what is the one thing these people ask? Schools and hospital for Douglas, right? And they don't want to invest or come here unless we have that. So there's going to be a lot of shaking up and I think also we have to look at the fact that the grants are no longer going to be sustaining how we do business.
A lot of the federal grants. You talk to people down there and you meet them at the double adobe, sandhill crane, lake, bird watching and all that and you start talking to them and they love the place. But the reason they don't move down here is because we don't have a hospital and the schools are not up to speed.
Right. Well, I think that's a great introduction.
Let's, let's, let's do that.
Let's do this.
Yeah, yeah. You guys got a meeting tonight, right?
Yeah.
And we have time to set for you guys.
Yeah.
Oh, let's make it quick so you got some time to eat.
Yeah, 25 minutes to set up.
Yeah, yeah.
But I will get started. Uh, so this is a work session for the comp plan updates. I last met with the board, um, in late January and that was my first opportunity to meet with you guys, drawing this important documents. The intent of that work session was to provide a quick overview of the document and what's date. Uh, the commission meets monthly. Uh, I keep this as a line item on each agenda, uh, with brief updates. Unfortunately, the last few months I've been quite, quite busy and we haven't had a lot of time to focus on the comp plan. So this is my opportunity to get feedback from both boards today, hopefully. Here's the agenda. Intent of the presentation is to provide a little more thorough update where I touch on each of the document sections. The sections of the document are listed on this slide, um, and I'll also provide an update on the community involvement portion. The intro and overview starts by providing document context. These are screenshots from the draft document. Uh, this section is who we are and how we are, uh, how we historically developed and it just gives a lot of context to Cochise County. This section also provides a lot of demographic information in addition to tables, charts, graphs, we provide a short blurb about what it means and how it may differ from state norms. For example, on the right hand side of the slide, I highlight that Cochise County has a slightly older population, as we were just discussing. So we were just discussing, uh, we also have a 10% higher Latino population than the state average. I conclude the demographic and uh section with demographic strengths and applications. For example, an older population can suggest need for programs that accommodate aging in place, uh, suitable housing or healthcare facilities and providers. So this all has meaning. Next, land use and growth. The map on the left looks a lot different than our currently induced map. The requirement for this section is to provide a map and table that shows proposed land use by type, density and location. Uh, that's what I'm showing on this page on the right hand slide is where we actually list out land use designation, description, allowable zoning, density, lot size. So there's a lot in the county or 56.3% of all land that is not under jurisdiction. Uh, that property falls under city jurisdiction, federal land, state lands. Uh, there are also certain types of land use like agricultural land and mines that are exempt from zoning. Uh, finally, there's land use that is poorly suited for development, like flood plains. Uh, that's where we want to direct growth away from. That's all included in this section. So places where we want to direct growth and places where we want to direct growth away from. Circulation. This section is all about creating a functional and interconnected transportation system. Part of that, we must include the general location of existing and proposed interstate arterial collector streets, railroad, public transit, airports, pet or bike jobs. On the screen, I'm showing state and federal roads to the left, county maintained roads to the right. We have more discretion over county roads, but showing all road types is important because of the interconnected aspects. Um, and let's see. This page I talk about uh railroads and transits. I also have a map showing active and abandoned railroad in the county.
Great.
Water resources. This section is a little more difficult because a lot of our authority is given to the Arizona Department of Water Resources. That's the agents, agency with regulatory responsibility over main managing surface water and groundwater resources in Arizona. Our requirements however for this section are to identify physically available surface water, groundwater, effluent supply, uh, projected water demand based on road projections, which in our case tend to be falling. Um, it, but how we will serve any demand that we are seeing. And if it's not available, how are we going to increase the water supply? Uh, we can pass measures or suggest policy to conserve water or to increase pollution prevention strategies, protect water quality. So there are things we can do, but this is, a big part of it is just um doing an inventory of what we have. Another required element is energy and it addresses the management, conservation, development of future energy resources in Cochise County. Uh, we are served by three electric utilities, each with a distinct energy mix. Um, you've probably heard of the all of the above strategy that's being pushed uh recently. On the left hand side of the page, I show geographic distribution of the utility companies. These companies are responsible for energy distribution, basically. And we also have APCO, which is Generation and Transmission Cooperative. It's one of. What's that?
They just changed their name.
What?
They're some of GNT.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
They're one of the 63 Generation and Transmission Electric Cooperatives in the nation.
My son just would.
The graphic on the right shows existing solar farms, the Afro plant or Jamesy, whatever they are, petroleum plants, important transmission lines, railroads. Arizona ranks among one of the top five states in the nation in total solar power generating capacity from both utility and small scale installations. Entire county is well suited for solar, but transition matters. A lot of the network is in the northern part of the county, District Three. And that happens to be where a lot of our applications for larger solar and wind farms also tends to be.
Congratulations.
No, I know, I'm not a fan of wind farms. I already told those poor guys out there, they, they, well.
Yeah.
There's issue. But there's a little bit.
I hate to tell you, but don't get in my view of Cochise as that.
Any, any just that, it's just, there's, there's, there's better ways.
It's the birds.
Yeah, the birds.
It's bad for the birds.
Not just the birds. It chases deer away, it chases the, the noise they make is all, but eh, I'm sorry.
And I meant to say, if you guys do want to, I know we're kind of limited, but yeah, I, I do want discussion, that's why I have to.
I mean, the legislature's working on nuclear power, um, which I, I don't know if you guys have read that legislation. They, they wanted to strip the counties of, of zoning authority over regulating nuclear power plant facilities.
Really?
Yeah, so, but I love nuclear power. So.
The comprehensive.
You don't, you don't need to lay a lot of desert to put up solar panels when you put a nuclear reactor.
You guys are really important when it comes to the comprehensive plan and that's something that, you know, kind of like, I feel like we're just scratching the tip of the iceberg and maybe we need to have a work session or are they going to be meeting on the comprehensive plan? Cause they have to kind of okay it first, right? And then it comes up to us.
We have to have a public hearing regarding it. Um, that's the bare minimum. That's required for any major amendment and we'll follow that process. But, you know, the more, the better is what.
Yeah, and I think maybe after this budget, whole thing that we've had like 39 meetings in this month, that this is the next thing we probably would need to look at. Cause it is everything, housing, environment, energy and stuff. And as I understand it, you guys are going to be part of creating that plan for us. And so you really, it's really important. I don't, I feel they really need to like look at it because so many changes are coming down the pipeline and so many things that we want to do. So um, how is that going to work?
Um, well, it's mostly through a series of work sessions, those like work.
Okay.
So, I mean, I can't give them sections to draft or anything like that. It's, it's largely um staff writes a draft and, and what you're seeing is right now in the document. And then, but I need their direction. I do keep it as a line item on every single meeting. You've been super busy.
Yeah, I know.
So, yeah, the more work sessions I can have and, and part of what I hope to get from this is how often do you want to meet and what do we want to focus? You know, as the permission generally, uh, cause they're my primary board, but it comes to you guys for review and approval. So also, since you're here today, what you want to see from me, from us, um, to make sure you're comfortable with a lot of what I'm presenting right now is part of the inventory. What I'm not showing you are the recommendations.
I got you.
Which we'll get from this inventory, so.
You already hit on it, right? So we have major hubs of communication. We have highways, we got rail lines. Where all of those intersect is where we should be zoning commercial, industrial and high density residential, right? The rest of the county, um, I'm, again, I'm not a big, I, I, I get the diversity of energy, but I don't like glating, you know, 140 acres to put up solar panels when I could put up a small nuclear reactor or even a coal fired plant on and generate 10 times the power uh in the same, in the same area, right? So, or a big, big windmills all the way down the, the valley or something like that. Yeah, when we could do it, that, I, a, a natural gas plant.
We're sacrificing a lot of real good cattle country.
Yeah, solar panels.
Yeah, solar panels and five years, they won't produce anything.
Right, yeah, they go, actually, I think it's like 12, they're worthless after 12 years, right?
Thinking about the land and the bacteria they kill and all that.
Right, so I, I think we're on that same sheet of music, right? But, but I, if you look at it now, all the economic basis in this county is in two cities, Sierra Vista and Douglas. That's where, with that, if you look and you could.
Douglas is questionable.
Right. But it could, it could come along with the port and everything, but you know, the northern part of the county where I'm at, which is shocked to me because I-10 runs right through the northern part of the county. The rail line runs right through and there's no economic development up there, right? So, and the, the model in Benson has been build houses. Uh, you know, we're going to build all these, you know, golf courses and houses and.
No jobs to go.
You know, we, we got, we gotta, we, we gotta find a way to incentivize. And again, at the I-1090 and the rail line airport area, that, that says industrial tech park all over it to me.
And I look at BDI, which we just spent half a million dollars on and how can we maximize? Cause that's the largest airport, right? They can land the biggest jets is BDI in the county, am I right? So why, there's a, a missed opportunity there.
There, there are companies that are developing unmanned aerial vehicles right now that would love to buy that airport. Uh, that, that are trying to leave California right now, that, that, why we can't entice them to build their companies and their factories. This is the stuff we have to do.
There's manufacturing companies that are looking at that very seriously.
That's what I'm getting at.
Cause you got the hangers and you got, you got the right, they're in the right location.
If I, if I weren't a county supervisor, I told Joe, I'd said I'd buy it as long as I got the two wells to come with it. I'd buy, I'd invest in that property. But that, that's a whole other story, but I mean, but no, but I mean.
Those wells are worth more than.
Than the airport is, I know. So, but I'm, I'm, what I'm getting at though is we, we, as a team here, cause you guys are setting, we have to balance how we're going to build houses, how we're going to build industrial tech parks, how we're going to build power generation. All that's got to be mapped out, you know, because we need, we need to do it now. Because if we continue to get this unregulated growth and, and whatnot, and we start to plump something down and you're going to hear the screaming and horn. So if we lay it out now, while the population's only at 125,000 people, we can plan, we're at a point right now where we have plenty of room technically uh to do this stuff. So if we plan out the, the, the industrial, commercial, light industrial and, and, and commercial and then high density residential and light density. And then try to protect as much of the rest of the county as we can for the ranching community and the ag community.
And the agriculture community.
And the tourists and.
Yeah.
All those folks, that's, that's the hard part.
So it's really crucial. You guys are at like, we're all at this, you know, point where it's going to be really important how we go. It can make all the difference in the world. So you guys are like.
With all the organizations around the county that uh share the same interest that we just talked about.
Yeah.
Growth, making it more economically feasible for everybody.
Smart growth, not uncontrolled growth. They gotta grow, cause that's what, you know, you look at Pima County and just look at the mess in Pima County.
But they feel, they feel like David and Eliot. They, we need to have a strategy that puts them all together and so we can come up with a mission, a s- a strategy that gets us all moving in the same direction instead of this group moves two steps forward and nobody else moves, they get tired and other, you know? We're not going to get anywhere like that. It has to be a united uh strategy.
Yeah.
Um, for everybody. We all want the same thing. It's just that we haven't wanted it at the same time.
And one of our big issues is retaining our youth.
Yeah.
And, and for this industry, because my former self was an economic development practitioner.
Oh.
Is finding that um educated workforce to manage that industry. And Cochise County does not have it.
No.
And we have not developed that. Our kids are leaving.
We don't get it for a couple of reasons. One, our population is small. So again, state funds schools based on student population, right? So if you have small student population, you don't get a lot of money. It, you have small popu- our, our revenue for our roads is based on the population. Our, our state shared revenue that we get from the sales tax is based on population. We suffer because we only have 125,000 people in this county. That's what's killing us.
Then the other thing I wanted to ask you was, you know, this, this movement to sell, the government to sell land.
Yeah.
I don't know what that's something that would impact us.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, so that might be something.
If you're a real state agent, you might not like that idea, but, but uh.
Well, you know, that's something that's going to be there, whether how we deal with it is something we have to come up with a plan.
Well, and that does relate to this element, which is open space, um, which isn't required, but we have a lot of open space in the county. In fact, uh.
It's gonna be dark skies too, is that part of it?
Um, it can be when it comes to that. Uh, we're not technically designated as an open skies community, but a lot of our regulate, three regulations do kind of lend themselves to that, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um, on this page, I have a spreadsheet and a map showing officially designated wilderness areas. Uh, these are areas that are intended to remain untouched by human development, ensuring they provide a habitat for wildlife, watershed.
Those are federally and state designated mostly or county?
No, these are federally.
Federally.
Yeah. It's like a 1960s law. Um, yeah, let's see. And they also offer opportunities for protected recreation. Uh, the overarching goal is to ensure that open spaces are planned and managed to benefit current and future generations. And to promote ecological environmental stewardship. So that's not a, a required element, I thought it was important for, for Cochise County.
People love the culture and history here, right? So the Chiricahuas, you know, the, the, the.
And our wild.
Cochise Strongholds.
Yes.
Especially the wildlife, I mean.
Rich history all the way around.
Yeah, you, you, you gotta, you gotta protect it, right? So I mean, it's just, and then we, there's a smart way to build houses and build industries without damaging. Yeah, so.
In optimistic way, Frank and, and Kathleen presented the, the corridor, the, the airport, Benson, the I-10, the railroads. Uh, potential there is enormous or anything you want.
And then Douglas, right? With the port and we're going to have to get a rail line up to Wilcox and a highway up to Wilcox. You know, there's all this.
Including that and the improvement to the roads to accommodate.
Truck a minute is supposed to come through that port.
On the threshold of a new golden era.
If, yeah, if we.
Plan it.
If we plan it.
We're gonna be behind the possible flags, new buses coming in.
Yeah, they told us a truck a minute during the.
They're gonna tell, don't go up Davis Road, that's how they're gonna go.
And so we need to start, that's why I always had an issue. How do you have money for the state of the art port and no road? You know, the basic.
You have Highway 80, it's already set up.
And then you look at 191, that's.
That's a district.
That's the best way to go, but.
They're not gonna go.
But that's what, we can force it. I mean, I really do.
Some of the, we, we've talked with the, the companies that are going to put some of those warehouses in. If we build a, a rail terminal right there and there's an old spur line, abandoned line that goes all the way up to Wilcox, that, that Union Pacific used to have. And then we could put a truck terminal in Wilcox. So you put the rail terminal in Bisbee to load those uh shipping containers on the rail line. And that'll take hopefully half the truck traffic off of 191.
Maybe not, because Mexico is currently looking at their uh railroad system and their highways. And there's some thoughts there about going from Tijuana south of the border, a couple of miles down to Chihuahua City and Monterey to the Gulf. And they're willing to invest a lot of money. Now that economic impact on our border, the 800 miles that we have in Arizona could be very significant. But I've had a hard time trying to figure out who those people are talking to on this side.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, but it's coming.
Yeah, I, I think so too. You know, and again, I, I think 191 is going to have to be improved. I, I, I do think 80 is going to have to be.
Mexico's looking at 80 real hard.
Yeah, I, I, I really do, but, but that's where we come in. Both of us have been going to the legislature and talking to them about trying to get help.
And I think that with both of us, that we can have that impetus and that kind of voice and we know how to do it to really stress where that money needs. And, and that's what's I think unique about Frank and I, is that we both have that political experience. And I've moved, you know, seen mountain, you know, what, moghuls move to mountains or whatever that expression is, just on having the will and it have, and you know, making a lot of noise. You gotta make a lot of noise and you gotta go and talk to all the powers that be.
We can get the uh plans that Mexico has, building that railroad a couple of miles up to the border.
Is that the one that's going to go all the way from Cananea then come up to Alphabeta?
It's from uh Tijuana.
Tijuana, but does it come across this way?
That's coming from a port, a warm water port in the Sea of Cortez.
It's between north of the Sea of Cortez and south of Arizona. And that real estate from Tijuana across towards uh Yuma and a couple, they want it close to the border.
So they can spur off.
Yeah.
And they, yeah, and they're thinking about coming in south of Abrieta, Cananea, I mean, uh, Naco, Ano, Chihuahua City, Monterey and all the way to the Gulf.
If we put a rail line down from the main Union Pacific line north of I-10, all the way down to, to Douglas.
Yeah, that's it. And it will take a lot of truck traffic, not all of it, but, but in Mexico, there's one freeway that goes from the, the Sea of Cortez to the Gulf. Only one goes east and west, the rest go north and south. And so they're thinking about the trade agreements and all that stuff and how they, two thirds of the televisions that come to the US come to Tijuana. And then they move them up. And they want to take advantage.
We gotta get ready for it.
Yeah.
It's coming, we got four years before the.
We, we need to start talking, uh, we need to become informed about who the players are, what they're thinking is and what impact they will have in our communities because it will definitely have an economic impact.
And we're ready for it, we have to be ready and.
They're looking at Highway 80 and Antelope Wells, they're more aware.
Where is it going to go though? I mean, it's just, you know.
Road forks in the interstate.
Yeah, no, but, but they're gonna, so if you're going east, why would you take 80 all the way?
Well, they're gonna go there and then they're gonna go to Ciudad Juarez, Chihuahua, all that stuff.
Yeah.
Those north, south uh railroads and trucking routes are already in place. It's the east and west uh to connect them, uh, and.
That's our opportunity, you're saying, right?
Yeah, that's been, that's been a uh concept for about eight or nine years already, since Douglas started to show some seriousness on the port.
And then you have also the airport, the BDI. I mean, that might be able to take some, you know, also some away from having.
Well, you got 400 trucks coming out of Douglas every day, minimum. They're not going to go through Tombstone or Bisbee or Naco. They're gonna go up 191 or Highway 80 now becomes more significant because of real estate is cheap and the uh, it'll be easier to build that freeway. uh, it'll be easier to build that freeway there. Uh, so that's, we have to think like that 10, 10 years from now. We can't think about what's going to happen this fiscal year. And we need to develop some kind of agreements with those people.
I know you got to go.
Yeah. Well, these guys got 30 minutes. They got to have some time to get some
Should I ask, who, who actually assembled this brochure? Is that you? Well, I want to thank you defusely for that.
Yeah. Did everybody get a copy of this, by the way?
No.
Yeah.
The presentation.
So then I guess the next thing is when, that's like, I think we have to think about it after, you know,
Some kind of schedule, like, how do you want me to involve you guys? And to what degree, how often?
Well, you need, you need definitely, they need, they need to go first in the meeting and then what do you think? Like another work session on the comprehensive plan where it's going?
Probably June-ish.
Yeah, that's okay.
We got to get the budget stuff done. So we're
Go ahead, take it. It's fine.
We're going to be, we're going to be busy for the next two months.
So then in June, we'll start focusing on this. And then I, I guess you guys can, you know, you can talk to them and they can be, but I really want a lot of feedback. You know, I want us to be able to say we had two or three thousand people who actually did the survey. So that, you know, we have that participation. And then as well as these guys meeting and getting what they have to say too. So
You know what? Just another point of interest. The history of Douglas and um at one point in the early seventies, Douglas was recognized as an all-America city. And the reason that got like that is because of the agreements they have with Phelps Dodge. All those people, the businessmen, not only in Douglas, but in Abrieta and Phelps Dodge got together and developed a mission on what was, how that area was going to develop, housing, uh, infrastructure, all that. And they did that and they got it to be recognized as an all-American city. When all that started to crumble, it went back to what it is now.
Yeah.
Learn from history. I think that we need to get in line and develop some kind of agreement with the cities, the business people, so that we're all moving in the same direction.
Yeah.
Right now we're separate and apart from everybody else. We're just doing our thing the best way we can. But there's a, we have an action plan. But where are the rest of the uh community leaders, the business people, the companies that if we worked in tandem with them, uh, we could move this ball forward a lot quicker.
Okay. So come up with the idea, Jerry, and like how we're going to get
I just shared.
Yeah. Move, move, move to work, guys. We'll get, well, we got to, we got to work with our planning and zoning.
Yeah.
And then we'll, we'll get it going. So um, then we, we may have a new planning and zoning or, or well, uh, director here shortly. Who was, Mr. Coxworth left. He went to Casa Grande.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Yeah. So we, we have a vacancy that we're in the process of filling right now. So we'll have a new
We're telling you that in our own directory.
Right.
Fun.
We have to deal with that too, when the, the new person, whoever maybe uh, uh, comes on board. Um, again, getting that information again. So it'll be a good opportunity to have another meeting. So if we, if we do this in June, like mid, mid to late June, you know, somewhere in there, after we get the budget kind of wrapped up and then we have to come back and fix the budget again one more time after the legislature finishes everything off. We're going to have our draft budget ready to go though.
Well, this has been helpful to me.
Yeah. So, hey, so we got food?
Yes.
Let's go get the food. Let's, oh, I got to adjourn first. Yes, I got to adjourn. Okay. So any last discussion? Okay, great. Hearing none. We're adjourned.